I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and injustice for all.
Okay, I'd like to have a motion to open the process of electing board officers and finance officers.
Mr. President, I move that we open up for nominations of office for the president, the vice president, secretary for our regular board, and also at the same time for nominations for the finance committee board also.
One second?
One second.
Yeah, motion is second. We do the nominating election process for the officers, president, vice president, secretary, and then moving on to the board of finance, president, and secretary. All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Okay, the floor is open for nominations for president. You do not have to have a second, so.
Mr. President, I nominate Neil Anderson for president.
Mr. President, I would like to nominate Steve Meyer for vice president.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Kurt Schwarzkopf for secretary.
Nomination? Hearing none. I'm going to pass the gallows of the vice president, let him pick who's the now for the elected president.
Mr. President, can we go ahead and nominate before you close out the nomination, before we take the vote?
Maybe open for board of finance president nomination?
I move that we nominate Mike Priest as the president. And Gil Smith as the vice president.
Second.
Or secretary, yes, sorry.
Any other nominations? Okay, we have officers nominated, president Neil Anderson, vice president Steve Meyer, secretary Kurt Schwarzkopf, financial president Mike Priest, and financial secretary Gil Smith. All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Okay, number three.
Mr. President, if we could pull out 3D for the, allow Mr. Myers to bet on everything else, because that is actually conflict.
Okay. We have.
I would like to have a discussion on the possibility of a new cycle meeting. Is that right, middle school?
Go ahead and get a motion, yeah. Okay, so 3A regular meeting, date, time, place, recommended the regular meeting, and the board of school trustees will be set as follows. The second Monday of the month at 7:00 PM at the Delfi Middle School through January of 2021. School board annual salary is recommended, school board annual salary made of $2,000 per year. C, school corporation treasurer and assistant treasurer is recommended that Andrea Miller be appointed the treasurer, and Gail Martin and Samantha Bolden be appointed as assistant treasurers. E, bonds, public school employee and public official bond, it is recommended that the public employee bond be set at $340,000. This includes the corporation treasurer, which is set at $100,000. F, the resolution authorizing the treasurer to pay claims, is recommended that the treasurer be authorized to pay claims on a regularly established schedule. G, appointment of school corporation general counsel. It will be recommended that the legal firm of Newby Lewis Kaminsky &amp; Jones, LLP, be appointed as the corporation legal counsel. H, school corporation attendance officer and hearing officer. Will be recommended that Ross Strebec be appointed as the corporation tennis officer and hearing officer. Institutional membership in the ISPSS, ISABO, and ISBA is recommended that the superintendent be enrolled as a member of the Indiana Association of Public School Superintendents, Indiana Association of School Business Officials, and that the board be enrolled as a member of the Indiana School Board Association. And J, designees to sign S5 agreements for alternative and private residential placements. It is recommended that Allison Clayton be appointed as a designee for alternative and private residential placement. A placement such as White's Institute can cost up to $100,000 per year. Okay. Looking for a motion and a second, and then have a discussion. I'll make a motion. Four items, 3ABC, E, F, G, H, I, and J. I second the motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Yeah, I personally rather have the meetings here in this board than versus over there. I mean, there's no hospitality over there. You want a cup of coffee or a bottle of water? It's most of the time, we don't have an overflow crowd, so I don't understand why we want to move it over there.
Any explanation?
I think just for the few needs we have to be answered, the people, I think we're good. But we can set it up however people want to set it. We can keep it here, and if we need a bigger place, we can move over there.
I mean, that's just my opinion.
I'm totally neutral where we have them. Anybody else have any?
I'm with Chris. I think this is home to us. I think that we know where we're going to be meeting. We have space, and that works out great, so I'm going to just be the standing meeting.
Mr. President, I'd like to amend that to, for the corporation office has the place, has the place to leave on record.
Any other discussion on that?
I have another question on the authorization of treasury to pay the claims. Is it totally just going to be her signature on there? No. Mike, the superintendent's signature will appear on all the checks. And we'll regale, but it's a treasurer's responsibility to prepare the claims, and in a sense, by posting them, she's pregnant.
When I read it, it just made it sound like it would just totally be her signature. So, just for that out there from the record.
In three or four months, I don't think you can sign it.
Okay, any other discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Okay, 3D, school corporation extracurricular treasures. It will be recommended that all building extracurricular treasures be approved. Carly Beamer, Delfi Community High School, Bobby Ellison, Delfi Community Middle School, Connie Meyer, Delfi Community Elementary School, Shelley Britton, Camden Early Childhood Center, and Susan Hartman Athletics. Looking for a motion on that.
I move to accept as president.
Okay, we have a motion accept and a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention? Motion approved.
This, this one resolution doesn't need to be signed by all board members about the treasurer paying. You want me to start it? You go. Well, but this one is a separate meeting.
Yep, need a motion to adjourn the reorganization.
Our reorganization.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn the reorganization meeting. All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Oppose? Meeting adjourned. Okay, we'll call the board of the regular meeting. If we have any visitors in the room tonight who would like to address the board on a specific agenda item, we would appreciate you, the podium's not set up, but if you would like to stand up, state your name and address, and what item that you would like to comment on this time. Hearing none, we'll move on. Number two, vote to fill the school board vacancy. You know Mr. Trueblood resigned off the board, and we had two applicants for that position. They are both here tonight. We do appreciate the interest these gentlemen showed. We do want to vote to fill that position, so if there is a motion, we need a motion and a second on the floor to fill that vacancy with either Mr. Strasser or Mr. Sumberg. Motion to fill the vacancy with Mr. Strasser.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to fill the vacancy with Mr. Strasser. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of Mr. Strasser filling the board vacancy, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Mr. Strasser, you are now on the school board as soon as you take over the office from Samantha. Okay?
Do you repeat after me, please? I, Tim Strasser, do solemn swear.
I, Tim Strasser, do solemn swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the State of Indiana.
And the State of Indiana.
I will faithfully execute the duties of my office.
I will faithfully execute the duties of my office.
As a member of this governing body.
As a member of this governing body.
So help me God.
So help me God.
We know you're not Nick Otis, so your name places Nick Otis. We know you're not Nick Otis. Okay, number three, approval of minutes. We have the December 9th, 2019, regular session, we have the December 9th, 2019, executive session, December 19th, 2019, special session, December 23rd, 2019, special session, and December 23rd, 2019, executive session.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the said meeting that's presented.
Second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve those five meeting minutes. That didn't sound like five meetings. Any discussion on those? Hearing none. All in favor of that motion, signify and say aye please.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Number four, routine matters. Personnel, Mr. Long?
Our, the title is not correct. It is now Nutrition Director, but according to the State of Indiana, but Mandy Farrell resigned over Christmas break, and I am also asking you in item two to currently employ Sandy Rowe as interim school nutrition director. Her pay will remain the same, and so we will begin the process of opening the office for people that are interested in applying and finding a new permanent nutrition director.
You are going to do B while you're at it?
I, oh, and B, as is often happens with equipment, our postage meter that we use to do all of the corporation is no longer under any kind of service. They will not work on it for any reason, so it makes sense for us to go ahead and replace that. The cost is $3,534 to be paid over five years. Isn't that correct, Andrea? Check, check on the right.
Sam was looking to check on it, I'm sorry.
We already pay month to month, and it's actually only worth a dollar or less to do than you want to stay in my back for three months.
Okay, looking for motion. So we're. Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the resignation of Mandy Farrell, and to employ Sandy Rowe as our new nutrition director. Yeah, and then to approve the replacement meeting of little Penny Bowes. Those are the minutes. Any discussion?
Does that need to be added to the $3,534 total, or the monthly cost per minute?
We have, you have the cost.
Okay.
Also, on the interim nutrition director, she's currently employed.
Correct.
Okay, where is she at? She at the high school?
And she has some experience as a food service director.
Who did we previously have our measuring machine?
Same company, just, this is just an upgraded machine.
Was obsolete, or?
Yes, absolutely.
Any other comments or motion? All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Number five, financial resolutions.
I was just, what we're trying to do is have these in order. We're anticipating some changes in our finances that would result in us transferring funds, so we're asking you to do this in the January meeting, and we won't have to come back to you to ask this. During the individual meetings, we will have you approve the transfers, but this gives us the authority to do that, and you to do that as we make those individual decisions.
Motion to reply?
I will make a motion for a resolution to transfer funds from educational to operations. B, transfer funds from rainy day to operations. C, transfer funds from rainy day to education. And D, transfer funds from operations to education, no, excuse me, from operations and education to rainy day.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for those four resolutions that were read. Any discussion?
This is just standard stuff we do over here. I mean, it's nothing really new outside the fund names has changed from a year ago, and so.
Right.
Anyone else? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Number six.
We're going to adjourn soon here, or at least suspend the meeting and look at the possibility of additional appropriation hearing for a taxable bond. And I invited Brock Boucher of Baker Tilly to come and make a brief presentation on where we currently stand with our debt and what a change like that would bring about. So Brock, thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you. Pleasure to be here. Pass that out. It's a hard topic for a lot here. As Mr. Long mentioned, my name is Brock Boucher with Baker Tilly. We serve as financial advisors to the school corporation. You may recognize our former name, Umball, more than the Baker Tilly, but working with Kirk Fletcher has been a transition for this project and assisting the school corporation. So the main goal for this evening is, as Mr. Long mentioned, review outstanding debt as of today, then highlight the estimated $2 million taxable GO bond, and how that could be structured to mitigate that annual impact to taxpayers. So if you jump to slide two, this represents the outstanding debt of the school corporation as of today. You can see before you, you have seven securities that are paid now throughout 2037, and you see here very nicely, you see a fit for 2021 and beyond where our existing debt begins to mature. So this is the visual of it, as we see a lot of flexibility with our 2021 payments going forward, again, to help keep our existing payments level to current levels, to not impact decrease from what taxpayers pay in 2019 and 2020. So that is the chart. For those of you who like to see the detail and the numbers behind those charts, you can flip to slide three. And for those seven securities outstanding, the debt service budget for 2020, as you can see, is $1,732,000 for existing payments. Again, that decreases to, as of today, $1.15 million in 2021. So again, ramp sizes the point that we have a lot of flexibility in how we can structure these bonds to begin repayment in 2021. So any questions over the outstanding debt as of today?
I do have one. You said just to not show our solar leads, right?
That's correct. That's a really good question. So this does begin the solar leads in 2021. So if this board makes that decision at a point, we can structure it away, that we can push that thing, remove that thing, but that service fund is really a 2021, like the 2021 budget costs. Really good question.
That's not technically a bond you're paying that corporation.
But we consider it a security. That's a really good question, part of the overall debt portfolio. So we'll jump into slide four. This is the same information that we saw on slide two. The only thing that we've added is the native blue chart. That represents the proposed $2 million taxable GO bond for your consideration this evening. You see that in 2021 and 2022, we structured away most of the payments will be in those first two years by giving this team some flexibility, and if you want to pay it over a larger, longer period of time, this board could consider additional debt in 2022 to help with some additional capital needs around your district. Again, just to maintain that flexibility going forward. But as the sales results come in, it could be some opportunity to restructure some of the debt, depending upon what the interest rates are on that given day. Again, for your consideration this evening, the native blue represents the proposed bonds. For those of you who like to see the numbers in detail, I'd ask you to flip through to slide seven, and you can see what the assumed repayment schedule would be. Again, it's after the supplemental information slide, slide seven. You can see the estimated interest rate for getting to taxable bonds opposed to the typical tax exempt bonds is 2.65 to 3.75 estimated. The sale coming up into this month, interest rates are still very competitive, near fiscal close, and we'll continue to monitor the market, but the intent and goal is to complete offering documents with this being a competitively sold bond. We'll continue here and distribute the offering documents to banks and then the writers approximately a week before the sale. Then whoever offers the lowest net interest cost would be winning better on that given day. And close one week later, where then the school corporation would have funds on hand January 30th, January 30th, 30th at the end of this month.
So this is structured over nine years, 11 months at this point.
At this point, the maximum, we can pare that down as needed for the school corporation, but that, we are establishing the maximum term as of today.
So we can pay it off early if things haven't worked out, we decide to pay it off early. We can, but it's actually structured for nine years, 11 months.
Thank you. So again, for those of you who like the number on the detail, so same information on the next slide with the estimated taxable GO bonds on slide five, represented by that second to last column labeled illustrated $2 million taxable GO bond in 2020. And based on what we're assuming for the interest rates, you can, again, fit that in really nicely with what we're paying in 2020, keep the total budget around $1.73 million annually. Again, avoid any type of increased debt to taxpayers.
Can you go through the advantages of taxable GO bond?
So I may rely upon Mr. Long as well to jump in for my similar, but hopefully I'll do a okay job, Mr. Long. But some of the additional perks of issuing taxable, yes, they are a little bit higher interest rates from your traditional tax exempt, however affords the school corporation the opportunity to go back longer than a period of 60 days to reverse yourselves for anything you paid out for capital investments or capital related expenditures past that 60-day mark, where you can go back and look at the duty for as long as you like, and reverse yourself to target that $2 million. So gives you as long a period as you want to reverse yourself for things you paid out of, what was once your capital projects fund, your non-operations fund, to buy toward the product. Those dollars could then reverse your operations fund for those dollars that were previously expended. So long as you think that.
Good saying.
What's the difference in interest rates typically between taxable and non-taxable?
Yeah, right now, we're seeing toward the end of 2019, seeing maybe a 30 basis point spread. So not significantly, but somewhere in the 25 to maybe as much as 14 basis point, or 0.25 to 0.4 percent basis point spread. So not significant, but still a little bit higher from what we're seeing in the tax exempt market.
So the taxable bond actually allows us to recapture previous cap fund stuff that will help to shore up. previous spent cap fund stuff that will help assure up our cash position, which is something that we desperately need. And so that will allow that where the non-taxable does not allow that.
I want to go back from today. You approved the reimbursement resolution back to sixty days. So again, a finite amount of time, you could go back and recapture those dollars. Any questions?
Any other questions?
So I want to highlight one more thing on slide number eight. So this is, this represents the general obligation capacity as of today for this corporation. But knowing that there is a GO limit, constitutional limit in the state of Indiana, you're not using every dollar available to us, we're charging that $2 million. So this is just for your reference. If you're referencing that, you're not using every dollar. So if something comes up as you move forward, that is unforeseen, boiler or something like that, you still have some flexibility with $40,000 GO or something for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend our current board meeting at this point.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the regular meeting. All in favor, say aye, please? Aye, opposed? We're suspending the regular meeting. Time to open public hearing for the additional appropriations. Again, this is a time that the public can ask questions if they feel the need to. Mr. Long, would you like to, you want to say anything?
No, I think the presentation summarized that the attractiveness of this project is that we can rebuild the balances within the school corporation. Paying off the $1.5 million loan essentially eliminated our balances in virtually all of our accounts. And so we need to take some kind of action to restore those. The state is looking at us very closely and we want to be in a position where they'd like to see a 10% balance in our funds for all those areas. And we can't cut enough people or cut enough spending to be able to possibly do that on our own. But this will give us a step up to be able to do that.
Any questions from the public? Hearing none? Okay, we close the public hearing. Reopen the regular meeting?
President, I'd like to make a motion to reopen the meeting. Unsuspend, I guess, is the terminology.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to unsuspend the regular meeting. All in favor, say aye, please? Aye, opposed? Okay, we're back in our regular meeting. Additional appropriation resolution.
Okay, Mr. Lord, President, fellow members, I move that we do an additional appropriation resolution whereas the Delphi Community School Corporation is a school corporation organized and under existing provisions of Indiana Code 20-3, I mean, dash 23, sorry. Whereas the Board of School Trustees of the school corporation finds that the present facilities of the school corporation are not adequate to provide the proper educational environment of the students now attending and who will attend its schools. And whereas the Board has determined to issue bonds to the school corporation in the amount not exceeding $2 million for the purpose of procuring funds to apply to the cost of renovation and improvements to the school facilities throughout the school corporation, including equipment, technology, and site improvements. And whereas the estimate cost of the project at present time is in an approximate amount of $2 million and the Board finds that no provisions have been made on account therefore of an existing budget, that a need exists for making additional appropriations for such purpose now therefore. Be it resolved by the Board, the school corporation, that the appropriation of the proceeds of the taxable general obligation bonds of 2020 or such other name as series designated by, determined by the school corporation's financial advisor in the amount $2 million be and the same is hereby made to apply on the cost of the project. The appropriation also includes incremental expense necessary to occur in connection with the project and the assurance of bonds on account therefore of that the appropriation will be in addition to all appropriations providing for the existing budget and so continue effective until the completion of the project.
Thank you, looking for a motion and a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. To approve the additional appropriation resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Long, that's some of your work.
It is.
Is there a completion date on this project? When you say, is there a completion date?
It makes it sound like there's a project.
The project is to reimburse the corporation for, and that's going to happen as soon as possible.
Okay, well, I just, you know, I mean, the way it's...
Yes, legally, I think it has to be structured that way.
It's reimbursement for items that were capital in nature for which bonds could have been previously issued in the state of Indiana. And that's, you know, the prior discussion on the fact these are taxable goes to that. So if you issue bonds on a tax advantage basis, the IRS only allows you to go backwards sixty days from the time you adopt the resolution. Issuing them on a taxable basis allows you to go back further to reimburse things that are of that capital nature. Renovations, improvements, including equipment, technology, and site improvements.
Any other comments?
Yes, just to clarify, I want Mr. Nicholson, as far as any time to clarify that. I know we'll get a decision we need, but as far as the clarification, it's not a two-year out or anything like that. It's pretty much a year.
Well, according to just the normal pervert cost for bond issuances, even if you were to issue on a tax exempt basis, you would have, on average, about three years with which to spend those funds. That's on a tax advantage basis. So it's a fairly relaxed timeline on the date of issuance till the date of 100% spend down. But again, my understanding is that the school corporation is not looking to hold on to funds that long. You have projects that you already have identified to be reimbursed or to be done pretty quickly or upon receipt of these funds.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the additional appropriation resolution. All in favor, say aye, please? Aye, opposed? Motion passes. B, taxable GO bond resolution.
I don't know if you want to read that or not. It's a rather lengthy document.
Mr. Long, can you give us the abbreviated version, what that is?
I can, yes. So, yeah, I agree, we probably don't want to read this one verbatim. The summary of this bond resolution is that it establishes the maximum amount to be borrowed. It sets a maximum term of repayment, a max interest rate. And as Mr. Voucher showed us a few moments ago with his presentation, estimating, what did he say, 2.75 to 3.75% is kind of... Is where the market is right now, if bonds are going to be sold today. So we have a max interest rate of 5%. Don't think that's going to be necessary, but just don't want to have to come back to the board if, you know, something happened crazy with the marketplace between now and the sale date. It establishes some standard parameters, things like what the form of the bond is going to look like, the approval of the offering document for the bonds upon review of legal counsel, which would be a combination of us and Nubie Lewis-Kaminsky and Jones. Authorizes continuing disclosure documents as similar to what the school corporation has done in the past. If you issue bonds to the public market, you have to make a promise to, on any basis, provide your Form 9 data, et cetera. So that's the gist of what is covered by this bond resolution.
Basically, if we read the first three paragraphs, that'll survive. That everything talks about how much it is, basically?
Yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to take a motion for a bond resolution whereas Delphi Community School Corporation is a school corporation organized and existing under provisions of Indiana Code 20-23. And whereas the Board of School Trustees finds that the present facilities of the school corporation are inadequate to provide the proper education environment of the students now attending or who will attend. And whereas the Board finds that it has, that there have not been some misfunds available or providing for an existing tax levies with which to pay the total cost of renovation and improvements of school facilities throughout the school, including equipment, technology, site improvements, the project. And the school corporation self-issued bonds on a tax exempt or taxable bond basis in an amount not to exceed $2 million for the purpose of providing funds to be applied on the cost of the projects, including reimbursements for projects. And that bonds in such amounts should now be authorized.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the taxable GO bond resolution.
No, he said the B.
He said the B.
Any discussion on that?
The way it's on your page four, the graph, the new bond is going to come in, and our tag, debt payments are going to stay the same until like 2023.
Until budget year, through budget year 2022, you're tested.
Does that mean we're not going to be able to do anything until then? Or is there an ability to restructure?
So no opportunities to refinance? No, that's a good question. No opportunities to refinance at this point, based upon your outstanding bonds in the market. We're always taking a look at your outstanding debt to see if there are refinancing opportunities, $6. But assuming that we don't refinance anything, you could issue bonds, but it would increase from your existing levels or increase the tax levying tax rate. So to more, this is pre answered your question. If you did not want to increase the tax rate, you'd need to wait until budget year 2022 to come back and issue new bonds.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the taxable GO bond resolution. All in favor, say aye, please? Aye, opposed? Motion passes. C, resolution to authorize tax anticipation warrants.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve a tax anticipation resolution, approving a tax anticipation warrant. I summarize it. So basically, this is to approve to, and tell me if I'm wrong, guys, okay? To set us up, in the past years, many years ago, we used to do tax anticipation warrant all the time. So what this does is allow us to go ahead and set this up at this current time. So if we need to, we can act on it. Doesn't mean that we're going to, but it will just, at this point, take care of all this financing. The $2 million bond that we just did should keep us...